Alright, Commissioners, your meeting is live.
Morning, welcome to the August 21st meeting that Riley County Commission please stand and join in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the re-ot for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Shannon Sterling with the Reach Committee and I am here to present the Employee of the Month Award for September. So this nomination came in for James Bridgers with IT. Since the day James started at Riley County has been extremely professional with assisting employees. He explains things and doesn't make you feel uneducated. He will make suggestions to help you and make things better. He is always polite when you call the help desk. He is a real asset to Riley County as he's involved with every department. We are very fortunate upon his retirement from the military that he chose to stay in the area and accepted a position with Riley County. He is very deserving of the Employee of the Month Award. James, I'd like to present you with this Employee of the Month Award for September if you'd come up with some. And then I'll need to take a picture with the Commissioners. Also an early birthday present for him too. So his birthday is Saturday, so happy birthday.
Thanks for.
We just stand up in front of the flags. So line up in the next step. And one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more for the record, and then one, two, three.
Congratulations, yeah.
James, you gotta have a couple of weights.
Congratulations.
Down Hilton. Hit the tops. Any other public comment?
Well, I had good comments this morning. I got some stuff for you to fix, hang out. Better get to that. Okay, well, Monday afternoon, top of National Association of Counties podcast titled, "County Experience Can Improve Disaster Response." This sounded interesting. Kevin Leonard, Executive Director of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and Amanda McKinney, Yakima County, Washington, I probably chopped that up, she's a county commissioner there, discussed many different and ongoing challenges the nations counties face responding to disasters, whether they're the natural cause, or man-made kind, as well as emergency management and the residency in general. Really interesting dialogue during that particular podcast. Tuesday, I had some dialogue with members of the Ogden Township as they had questions on several topics, including the recently sent revenue-neutral mailer. Interesting conversation there. Possible speed limit changes out into Rover Road, which is off of, I guess we could drive there, kind of in the residential side over there, I guess I would be coming down the road. And what those changes might mean, upcoming city elections in the fall. I once again be leading the city candidate forum over there, which will be taking place in October. Something I really actually like doing every other year. Wednesday, spoke to several different individuals through my network, and some dialogue I picked up on pertaining to RHIDs and how funding evaluations work with school districts. Now, it's a little bit out of my lane, but it sent up a couple of different red flags to me. So I went through my network there, got some clarification. There were several competing thoughts and analysis on that particular subject, as always seems to typically be. Wednesday afternoon, attended the August Policy Board meeting of the Flint Hills Metropolitan Organization via Zoom. Items of discussion included some public comments, as well as financial updates. Got some staff updates from the NPO, which included the work on the Connect 2050 Plan and the second connection cost benefit analysis, which they're getting some bids on currently. Let's see. Oh, sorry, also got an update from KDOT on some things that they're doing as well. Action items included approval of the June 18th meeting minutes, the transportation emissions reduction strategy project that's going on over Junction City, the Unified Work Program Amendment Number Two, some changes to it, the Title VI Program, the Limited English Proficiency Plan, and the 2024 Audit Report that's recently came out. Discussion items included the second round of some potential projects under that transportation emissions reduction strategy, the money market account that they have at the city of Manhattan, and the planning manager annual review. We'll meet again in September. Probably not in October because I won't be here, but gonna have a lot of stuff to work on here as we get towards the end of the year. And then lastly, I attended the Policy Breakfast this morning, hosted by Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce at the Doubletree. Guest speakers were Lisa Soderland Isikson, Director of the Early Childhood, and Vern Hendricks, President and CEO of the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, shared their insights on the newly opened Flint Hills community in South Bay. That's all I got.
Okay, well, let's see. Monday after our meeting, I attended the Law Board meeting in Leonardville. Chair John Mata was called away on a family emergency, so as Vice Chair, I had to step in. It was a long agenda with regular police reports and several executive sessions. Members of the Aggieville Business Group were there to continue the discussion on policy policing in the district that's affecting their businesses. A committee of Craig Beardsley, Law Board Member, Brian Pete, and a reported representative of the Aggieville Businesses will work out a solution to the problem, and hopefully we'll bring it back to the Law Board, hopefully before the next big, or the game day next week. So it might possibly, we may possibly have to have a special meeting prior to those large crowds coming in to get this resolved. So. Several contracts were referred back to council and one to the County Commission for reviews. Tuesday and Wednesday, went out door to door and handed out a meeting and financial information flyer to each home in taxing district. People that were home were very happy to get the information, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout from that meeting next Tuesday at the community center in Keats. It was pretty hot. Yesterday, yesterday evening, that kind of thing. So anyway, that's all. I did go to the Policy Breakfast this morning, too. That's all I've got.
No, Monday, was, yes, we all were meeting, long discussion on Aggieville policing stuff, and said this group to give credit, resolve some issues. Then the other discussion had is, like Director Pete had said, they've been meeting with the group about the homeless problems and downtown and everything, saying, maybe you was cautioned that it's not their mission to find care for the homeless. They can direct, you know, find some other places, but it's not, it shouldn't be their focus. So of that. Then Wednesday was the North Central Jubilee Attention Meeting. They have a new teacher this year, they've had a review of his schedule and how the school will be structured this year. A lot of more details. He has a lot of different ideas than what the last one did. I think it's good to work pretty well. They keep him busy through the day. And then in the facility, there are four levels of privileges for the youth. They, they had this place for a while, they kind of gave us more explanation. They all started at one when they come in, but good behavior moves them up levels, and each level gives them more extras. And said it's really worked well on keeping, keeping them in line. There's things like an extra half hour of game time on the video things and a lot of things like that. So it seemed to be working well on Mass File, so the Policy Breakfast this morning. That's all.
So get ready for business measures. First on that, as a Danny employee action, former sheriff, given regional assistance and first part of separation of service, this is a part time. All three please sign.
We don't have to make commercials, it says. I've never seen that, that's.
And new and second to approve paper on council payments, favor.
All three please sign.
Yeah, must have had a lot of bills this cycle.
Found us, huh? You found us over here. You found us over here. The fan's loud, yeah.
You have to go low. You have to put a bobbed desk in.
There is a table that behind here if you need to. It's a mile on seven.
Well, there is. That'd be good. Oh, I see this.
Well, there's some, a big table in my office, too, which is.
He said him over there.
Oh, very instinctive.
Don't have any. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the August 18th meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
And move and second to approve the minutes from the August 18th meeting, all favor.
And.
Very tentative.
Any United Nations press conference? Yeah, Mr. Nice, we get 3:30.
You got palms and stuff here. Exactly. Yeah, come on to the case. Well, I mean, yeah, that, now that the stadium has a roundabout, you know, there's bicycle, you can watch them. I don't have a girlfriend, but yes. I, you might go to Valley House, or, you know, there's a stadium. Well, technically, we have three, yeah. We got one in there.
It's like a media break. TV Johnson, everybody's.
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah. That is not a beautiful spell. Oh. Seven minutes.
Right, hi. Was it, oh, yeah. You gotta look at this, and we're, sorry, and Kate's state one, yeah, that's what it's, uh, those, honestly.
Yeah, I was gonna do that last.
I thought I switched it up. It was a little slow. It's high, maybe it's high.
And you can't fly.
That is the loading system.
Oh, that one. It can be, like, this, when you, it works.
I should say, I don't know what she said the other day. There are going to be at Sunday, in most days. If it does, at least now.
It's just growing faster.
No, you're right inside.
Today's Monday morning.
Oh, let's see, I said Friday's weekend, I could shave it today.
I have my intentions.
I gotta shave it today.
This one, I'm thinking about raving up on Maui's.
You just want. Yeah. Start no shave November, a couple months, certainly. Still a little bit more for that, I think. If you got one. Maybe.
Did you even have any of the pastries over there? Those are being banned, happening. No bread, eating her son. So we're lying together, someone said something, said, yeah, I have some of this stuff, and he was gonna pass to him, and we walked away about five, I think, within a second.
All right, I said, all I need, absolutely have is my eggs. Outside of that, whatever, I have to have my eggs.
Can we attempt it, you know, I figured quite good. I think it's a good approach, happy with the choice there, can you sound like it was good?
Yeah, it was, it was absolutely worth it. Absolutely.
Maybe just pause a couple extra minutes on the treadmill. Then you wanna get back to it, my body's not, not responding well.
Do you have an exercise thing with them?
No, I go with maximum performance for one call. On the east side?
Yeah.
Scott, you guys do a great job. Might be the thing, if I got the bike and stuff at home, I wouldn't use it. I have to make yourself go someplace. Little, little, little more expensive to be a, a boat man.
Yeah.
Or well, even hang laundry on.
tend to think that's what I have, a closet, two closets.
Like a figure, starting, you know, it's only 15 minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, now, now I'm up to 30, but I mean, it's like, how much is that?
I'm sorry, I just put the AirPods in, and during the summer, you know, watch a podcast or a football game.
There, there are.
Like you used to see, uh, person here.
Yeah, a little bit, he's kind of been a little bit banged up, so I mean, taking easy. Imagine having play offense and defense. You're all. Let me know if you can't hear me, I'll try to speak up. There does seem to be a bit of an echo. I think that's me.
So good evening, folk, or good morning, folk. Michael Couch has made application with Riley County Planning and Development, question to replat lots 270 and 271 University Park. A single lot. The subject site is generally located approximately 500 feet northeast of Hawthorne Lane on the south side of Red Blood Drive in Sherman Township. Property was originally planted as lots 270 and 271 University Park in 1959, and later rezoned for zone residential during the 1974 zoning conversion process in County. The applicant wishes to combine the aforementioned lots into a single lot or to build an accessory structure. There is not a request or requirement to rezone the property. As mentioned previously, the property was originally zoned A1 Single Family Residential during the 1974 zoning district conver- conversion process. The zoning district was renamed to SF2 Single Family Residential.
Uh, the zoning district was renamed to S F two single family residential. Uh, January twenty twenty two on the adoption of the land development regulations. There are no variances, special uses or conditional uses associated with the sites. Right zoning is suitable for. Raleigh County Fire District number one will continue to serve the site. Uh, the nearest county fire station is the University Park Fire Station. Currently located at seventy four twelve Red Blood Drive. That's about to change if it hasn't yet. The subject site is located within the uh, five road model of a fire station. Uh, this is the final plat illustrating the orientation and location of the new lots and boundaries. Uh, there are no utility easements that will be vacated with this replat. Common lot line between the two lots will be eliminated. The property is in compliance with sanitary code. This is the home occupying existing lot two seventy one. Accessory structure behind the house actually belongs to his neighbors. In the in the north eastern direction, you can see the loop driveway that serves the property. And this it uh, shows the area between the home and they kept lot two seventy. Uh, showing his existing accessory structures serving the property. And this is essentially the common property line between lots two seventy and two seventy one. With they kept lot two seventy to the left of the picture. This is the uh, area where the app wishes to build his new garage. As you can see, it's clear the property and we're in in anticipation of getting the building permit. So on June ninth, the Raleigh County Planning Board approved their uh, final plat of University Park. A fifteen of replat of lots two seventy and two seventy one. University Park into a single lot. Uh, as it was determined that it met the minimum requirements of Raleigh County Land Development Regulations and Sanitary Code. And that was August eleventh. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners acknowledge the approved final plat of University Park Unit fifteen. Uh, a replat of lot seventy and two seventy one University Park into a single lot. Uh, accepting the easement's rights away or licenses as shown to be dedicated on the final plat. It's very, very important. If you have any questions, that's. Concludes my presentation. Also have a a mylar on the table in the back there for signatures.
I would make a motion to approve resolution number zero eight two one two five. Um. To acknowledge and approve a final plat for University Park Unit fifteen. And accepting the easement's rights away licenses as shown to be dedicated on the final plat.
I'll second.
Been moved in second as approved res- resolution. Zero eight two one two five acknowledging the approved final plat of University Park Unit fifteen. The accepting easements right of ways or licenses shown to be dedicated on the final plat. On favor.
All three of you, fine.
Yeah, two, the first time. Didn't wait. Yeah, he was doing three. But change quarters. So. There are. What I was calling. Yeah. Lot of. I can mention. They honestly had. They started. They'd be really big. You know. They'd be embarrassed. No, they're not pictures. It's kind of like, so you're a name. Well, hurt me.
And. Yeah. First, we get really excited on Saturday, Rich. Cause in the evening, you can watch KU and President's Day.
Moot and her.
You get to see them. You get to see them, Chris, in their uh, afternoon stadiums, I like to call it.
See, they're having. That is a great meeting. Twenty one inch Philly G State.
Yeah.
They're doing all they can and they got sold out. Get Phil. Phil for them.
Technically. The capacity is actually smaller, isn't it?
I mean, on something. That's all.
Yeah. Okay. So. Okay, you say didn't. I'm a stadium. Yeah. Yeah, so they call it two.
Basically. But this is rather. Yeah. He is doing. Not leaving me.
That's forty. We're eating forty.
Low. So. In preparation that. Your state. Let's finish the.
Um, I think. If you're not in a power five conference, they give you like a three year window or something to. That team.
Of course, they're spending a lot of money to use them.
Seats. Well, their deal is to put the bosses and stuff in there to be from the three main stadiums. Everybody seems to do.
That's a case. She keeps saying they need a bigger. I really want to beg. It's.
Very big as long. Yes.
They don't. They don't get a. Except for the. That said, yeah, he's got bigger things to do than he's. Also, she said.
Right. But that's what they make. That's what they supposedly make. Shoot, I think. Tango. You think this is. So, you see how much it's gonna be. It's expandable. They don't use it. I don't think it's. It's like sixty six. It looks weird. Yeah. You know, but we've got huge walkways and stuff. You can't get all the sessions that. You got that big space back there. They got that. On the flames there.
If they can. If they did. They could. And that. I mean, you know. You know. Can you. I think there is.
Yeah, they used to have water parties just like.
They're. Yeah. Because. They put bathrooms for the earth and they were gross. Yeah, they're good. So in the end, I do. I understand that one.
Yeah.
Set up. Especially, you know.
Yeah.
Special thing. In the head. The people. Not. Professional. They have to personally. It was just. I don't know. Good morning. To be here. Cause they never are. Move that on. But I don't think you have stated they're choosing. Which state or state.
So what can I know?
Yes. Still.
Still. Really, it's a line of those spots. Side to do, they've got. I said, several different spots or again, including one over the open part.
Yeah. And it's it's interesting. So. City, the state is capable of. Then they.
Yeah. And.
It's a city. And city has to make.
Yeah, that's true. None of the fun. Well, hard, you got Kansas City, Missouri, and then right next to you, you got Kansas City, Kansas. If you're a rapper, perspective, it's easy to. It's easy. Oh, off.
It's a season. Yeah. So it's. And it's. Say this. And say. Yes. Yeah. Show what's.
You just. Yeah. Can you say, can you? Yes.
Yeah, there sure is. Some folks.
You don't. Yeah, I was gonna say. You you may not actually want to go there, but he does say this. Maybe Kansas needs. That's the for. Yeah. Pretty. My surprise food checkout, which is my own state park. You know.
But it was a teenager. Yes. And some. You say, sure is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or Kansas City, Missouri is probably going to.
And.
Yeah.
It's like everybody there.
Uh huh. Where can you get there? And the. I didn't. Interchange.
I've got the same thing cut down on the other. Turn. Interchange down there. And you know, off was highway seven.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. There was. Yeah, they listen. But in the beginning. Yeah. It was. Like, I was a kid. We were so. It's just real fascinating to see. To make.
Yeah, I just thought the worst when you get out of your smothered. But we've been having a little bit of. You know, more of a singing. Oh, yeah, three blocks of stuff. Look at the street from there. Well, once they make sense of it, which is baseball. Yeah. I'm the. The original plan was to choose, you're gonna take that over and. Expand the stadium there, but they're tired facility. Basically there. I. Yeah, it makes sense. He does.
They're looking for money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the Hunt families, one of the Richard families in the NFL.
On. This is. Fun.
Yeah, it's close.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I get it together.
The years.
Oh, is that.
All the years are good. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Joe, what's the. The wow.
He's the one gave Lamar the original loan to. Um. The teammates in Dallas, they're the Dallas Texans. And then they played one or two seasons there that moved to Kansas City. He and Ralph Wilson was the owner of the Bills. Twice pulled their money together and saved it. What was in that A F. Then. They had the conference in which whatever stuff, Super Bowl. Good. Back in Texas. Okay. We have a bit opening for the typically floor chute replacement out at the transfer station. First, and I guess the only good that I have is NF Construction out of. A backup. Then the one and then the two. Eighty July and twenty nine twenty five. Plus a table of liquidated damages on the two. Okay. Grand total I have for alternate one. Right, it's. Five hundred ninety two thousand one hundred. Forty dollars. The alternate two. Basically, the difference is installation plates. An extra ninety thousand dollars. So the alternate two would be six hundred forty nine thousand five hundred eighty.
You're set.
No, we get.
Six hundred forty nine thousand five hundred eighty for the alternate two. And that's just the addition of uh. Um. Plates.
A what?
They are forty plates.
Plates.
There is a bit on on two. Okay. Number of working days is a hundred. Hundred business days or a hundred and forty calendar days. Well, that's. Then, um. Oh, starting date would be six weeks from. N T P. From from what? N T P.
Notice.
Yes. I did not have that. And. That's everything.
Well, do they? I wonder, do they work on calendar days or business days or?
Guess that's to be determined. Indeed.
Yeah, already. The calendar are a forty day month of the month. So I guess it's they may or may not work on Saturday.
Okay.
So we'll see. I mean, this makes a difference. So they'll be charging the day that every day they're out there doing some substantial work.
Some, there's some companies are doing four, ten schedules and. You know. Fridays are. One of the extra days up often. I didn't see.
Yeah, you have to.
Okay. So I didn't miss anything there. Okay.
All right. Now, good for NF Construction. Then one and two. And. Bit of one is attached. And we just. Alternate one. Five hundred ninety two thousand one hundred forty. Eight. Alternate two, six hundred forty nine thousand five hundred eighty. Nice. Yeah, we're moving to hundred. Hundred distance stays or a hundred forty calendar days. Six weeks from notice of seeing this.
Well, with that. Being a hundred plus a day, sounds that's gonna work out the scales and stuff out at your transfer station.
Will. Will we be shut down while we're doing that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there will be. So this is replacing the four where they done try.
Right.
It's so easy. There won't be. We won't be able to. For that. Where are they gonna get them? Wherever they can find a place to go. I don't think we make it that hard problem. No. Or whether all is take the truck.
We've given them note, given all the.
Yeah.
Companies notices this.
When we.
Heck, it's a lorry.
I I think when Gary. Have best.
Yeah.
So I've seen a lot of them go over to Gary County.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I didn't realize it was gonna be that long, so.
It's a lot of tedious work. I think the biggest part, I need to be in the chute. We can play, we do in the little chute, which is prior.
Yeah.
Six weeks after. Order part of manufacturing that. They talk about. They talk about them. To install it. They'll, they'll take out the top inches and half inch of the floor. Of, which is tedious handwork. And then. Replace it with either the. It's a really hard concrete floor or steel plate. The, the two dollars, that's why the whole concrete.
Yeah.
We're planning a pretty good level of T M K on this is going to be closed. We will. Advertise a new shit.
Not so much for the hall, but for the general public, I'm not sure if you're just very aware.
Already got some flat for us being closed on.
Really.
I know.
You respond, no, we ain't seen that yet.
So like, what do you do in yard work on Labor Day? It's the whole point of having the day off. Yeah, I understand that, but. You can take it on Tuesday or wait till the weekend. It's not even worth it to me.
I didn't get one. Um.
Last time, you want to try again?
The engineer.
Engineer's estimate on the last one.
I don't know what I, I didn't think my last. Well, it's closed. So.
So do, with one bid, or do we send this back to staff?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I would make a motion to send the, um. Uh, bid for the transfer station tipping floor and chute repair, replacement back to staff for review and recommendations.
I'll second.
We moved it second to send bits back to staff for review and recommendations. All in favor?
I have. No, the commissioner is out, but Evan's not here because he's getting married this weekend.
Oh, same. It's cool.
In, in the area or is it there on?
Yeah, out at the blue, the, Miss the Blue out Randolph venue.
Okay.
He's marrying Susan Bowler, the elections, and Mike Bowler's daughter.
One big old happy family we are on.
And John and I were just talking about that. We'll find out. So you really know Mike comes with this deal?
Well, your kids are all married off.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, all of them have grandkids already, so. Yeah, man.
We've got roommates right at the moment.
I do. At the moment, non-paying roommates. Moment. Or freeloaders is a.
Ready, commissioners?
Well, we cashed that financial information to you too.
I don't know if I've seen the financial information, but it's always liar for the.
I'll give you what I've got some.
Ready question? Commissioners, uh, here to request to fill the and advertise the as needed H R clerical assistant position. It will become vacant Wednesday, September third. Uh, this position is necessary, which aids in the ability of human resources for the data requirements. And, uh, uh, it's different than it used to be when I first started. We have much more transition and employment just nationally. People just don't stay around very long. Uh, this position is one that we actually requested to be a full-time position two years ago, did not this year because of budgetary constraints and concerns. Uh, can tell you this position really does need to be full-time. As a matter of fact, the person that's leaving. Uh, worked H R at M B A F is going back to M B A F. She got caught in that transition of don't need you, need you. Um, she said, would you like me to write a letter to the commissioner saying how badly this needs to be full-time because she sees the amount of work that it is, and it really is that much work. And so. In the future, this is a position that will, will, will come for you as full-time. We are not asking for that today, just asking to fill it as is, but it is definitely a need with the amount of work that we have inside of the size of organization that we are.
Uh, well, I'd make a motion that the board hold the position of the as needed, um. Human Resources Clerical Assistant for Riley County Clerk's Office.
I'll second.
We moved it second to prove the position. Quest for the H R clerical assistant in clerk's office. All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioner, for finishing that. Who's just.
And talk to him.
We have a call sign.
Anybody else?
Right?
Walk is fast. It's fast.
Yeah.
Two minutes. I always look at it.
I was going, the nice font, faster than I was. That baby's. What am I hearing? Oh, that's an actual. Oh, okay. I thought it sounded like somebody spun. I'm the opposite. I'm letting it go the other direction away from us.
Jacob, we own card, we'll step here a little bit ago.
But maybe it wasn't going to be shown.
No, yeah. I mean, this was when we first sat down. So I'm going the opposite direction on that one too.
I don't think they'll do this shot here.
Yeah, they were going to get it all set up for us.
Well, good morning. Happy post fair. Um, you're probably tired of hearing about it already or over the last few months, but, uh, we had a great time and, uh, I think we had a successful fair for this year. Um. What's the guy put on there? Uh, the carnival's fun, the rodeo's fun, but for us as an extension office, the big thing is the four H projects. Um, you know, it's the educational component and, um, the general public, you know, you can see, see the projects there. It looks great. And I always like to remember about the, the hours, the education, the learning, the tier sometimes that goes into the projects. So this year I was glad to see that a four H projects were up five point eight percent from last year. So this year we had two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine projects entered at the Riley County Fair by four Hers. And the general public got more involved. We were up forty-two percent in the general public open class entries for four hundred and thirty-six entries. So, um, you know, there was a couple of down years around COVID and some years like that. So. You know, every year there's more demand for kids' time between sporting events and summer activities, which are all good things. So I was really happy to see that our overall entries for the public and for Hers were up this year. Um, so I appreciate your all's support for the fair as well. Of course, our super tenants, volunteers, all doing great things. And. Of course, the other departments from, you know, public works and parks department, um, EMS, um, the, the police department had a great presence. I mean. I could go on and on. Overall, I just really appreciate the support from the other departments because we could be the face on it, but without everybody involved. Riley County kind of have a public event like we do for this, so. All in all, a, a, a great event. I think it all went well and it got a little warm the last couple of days, but you know, it could have been a lot worse in my opinion. So I, I greatly appreciate Mother Nature's help as well. Um, second thing I wanted to bring up for you to this morning is now that I've kind of got my feet wet, we got through our fair. I've event officially launched, um, through our office, the welcome aboard board leadership program. I want to make you all aware of, of as you're going out through the community. Um, so what this is, this is a program to work with community boards, nonprofit boards, um, just to help them learn what does it mean to be a good board member, being proactive board member, and just, um, more highly functioning. This is a statewide K-State program that I've been trained up in and gone now through and actually present, uh, appreciate Riley County Historical Society. Let me present it to them for the first time to kind of kick it off in our county. So this is a four-part series that covers roles and responsibility of board members, understanding board members and conflict management, financial responsibility and strategic planning. And this can be all done at once for a board, or it can be broken up to match and meet needs. So just let you all know, if you know of groups in the county that might need some board leadership work and, uh, kind of one-on-one training with them. Let me know. We'd be happy to help and, uh, continue to offer this program through our extension services and throughout the community. And, uh, lastly, one thing I want to mention is, uh, another thing we talked a lot about is the master gardener training, or master gardeners in general. Well, fall is when that time kicks off. Um, Greg Isone is getting applications to start on September fourth. So once and again, if committee members hear about this program, want to get going. Now's the time. And one thing a lot of think folks don't realize is this is a pretty intensive course. Over the next two, three months, they're going to have forty-eight hours of class time learning about this. And once they get through this class time, not only is it good for them to learn, but in their first year as a master gardener, they are signing up to dedicate at least forty hours of community service gardening in the community. And so not only is it good for the people going through it, but also is forty hours per person giving back to the community. Some of this might be gardening at the K-State Gardens, but a lot of it is also doing educational events, outreach, helping with school gardens, things like that. And so it, it really is a great opportunity for community members to also increase their own learning, but also give back to the community. Um, as well as master gardeners after their first year are required to give back ten hours of year volunteer service that continues even after the first year as they continue to be part of this organization. Um, interested citizens can reach out to our office. There's an online application to fill out and they can get started learning right away. So. Um, yeah, those are kind of big three things happening right now that, um, um, yeah, that kind of. Uh, how do you say? Back to standard business. I would say we enjoyed fair, but now back to our regular scheduled programming. For like a better term. Uh, is there any questions I can answer about that in general or, uh, things maybe you normally heard about that I didn't touch on?
Uh, fair. It's one week. That's all year for you, goodness.
Right, yeah. You know, I, we have lots of other great programs that go on, but I'd be lying if I wouldn't say kind of, it's, it kind of stays there bubbling the rest of the year. Just to make sure it can go off without a hitch and try and go have a great program, but. Um, you know, like, once again, I know we're the face of it. But really, without the other departments and especially the guys out there working the fairgrounds, the parks department, everyone else, they, they really do a great job of helping it and. Because at the end of the day, it really is a, a community event, so I, I appreciate all their help on that, especially them and the volunteers. And of course, our local, uh, commissioners will help us sample goodies at the fair.
That was the best part. They might hit here too, the ones I brought back. Yeah, they were.
All right, thank you.
She took it up to San Diego. Or, sorry, or Los Angeles. What I'm thinking there. Yeah.
They're, they're Brazil soon too. Didn't they do that once? Reserve Mexico City.
Oh, yeah.
It was the Eagles. Then there was one thing. Yeah, I never heard of you.
I mean, I jabbed it. I've watched it a little twice here. I don't have chilis.
That's right. About two, all even. Are you there?
Oh, I know.
I got you. Is there? These.
Oh, yeah. It's everything. I originally had on calendar for tomorrow. Dance for them. Everything else you had on like can't get to for tomorrow. Free bird.
Not bad, they some.
You're going to catch up once.
It's really.
By the time we get there. I, I thought it's probably to the five and get to you. This is one of those projects that have been going along, something's come up along the way.
Then you're. Thank you.
I put you out to do. You're the one told you to go back to my house. You're welcome. Oh, I was gonna say, um, thanks for putting us in scenery. Better than what I was looking at. I get sunshine, I think.
Like.
It's the entire thing.
Oh, really?
Carceral, usually.
LeBron.
LeBron. I did know that Brian would be, but uh, three days ago. That's why they have to wait until ten fifty. Don't tell them.
Brian. Yes, sir.
Okay, good morning, county commissioners, county clerk, uh, members of the, uh, the county team as well as uh, folks who are tuning in. I'm Brian Pete with the Riley County Police Department as the director. Uh, just giving a brief update to the county commission regarding some milestone reporting. Um, we are still waiting to hear back. As you know, a few months ago, RCPD put in for a uh, a grant for school safety and security. This is mainly going to cover the county schools, USD three eight three said they didn't have any immediate needs. So we put in the grant for the safety um, items for our county areas. We still haven't heard back from the government on the award or not. We are with schools starting back up at K state as well as local schools, we are and have been prepping for traffic safety enforcement. Uh, keep especially with the construction that's been going on around town. We want people to drive safe, drive slow, you'll get there.
Construction going on around town.
I just wanted to also let the county commission know that we have been now more than ever in discussions with federal partners. Now they have their federal missions that they're doing, but as far as regionalized task force and how do we um, build upon one of those resources? So again, we can maximize current manpower and staffing levels rather than asking for, for additional ones. So we're looking at uh, federal partners with HSI Homeland Security Investigations, not the ICE branch, but the investigative branch, the eighteen eleven folks. Um, specifically uh, with human and sex trafficking as well as for narcotics. Uh, the Riley County Police Department has just unfriiled internally a new policy and to stand up a behavioral threat assessment team unit. A B T A T, if you will, is uh, is a group of, it's a multidisciplinary group of professionals, law enforcement, prosecution, um, community mental health. A whole bunch of other folks that when threats or potential threats or issues of concern come in uh, that are reported in, we're able to have a multidisciplinary approach to do um, assessments on the individual. So for example, someone sends a threatening letter, someone makes a threatening post uh, online, social media. How do we kind of get ahead of a potential issue rather than saying, well, this is not a law enforcement matter, or this is not a mental health matter? How do we work together as a multidisciplinary team to see what services are available to intercede in any potential targeted um, uh, threats um, to our community? So we're in the early stages of that. Uh, then we're also looking to work with AI companies on how to utilize or leverage new technology to help us with our um, intelligence led policing efforts. So we'll give you all more on that one. Again, we want to, that's what our law board had mentioned three years ago. How do we use technology to maximize our uh, services and to keep manpower low? So we will be briefing you all on anything that comes out of that. Of course, we were able to uh, the law board approved the purchase of our body scanner. We plan to have that body scanner in the jail by the end of this month. Again, that reduces, that increases safety and that helps us to reduce liability and risk management. Um, we did have a meeting a few days ago with uh, Rich Fargo and with uh, Brittany regarding the um, Trinity healthcare, the possibility for healthcare for individuals who do not have healthcare that come into the jail. Again, that's a two thousand dollar deductible. There is uh, from our perspective, we have to run it, look at it, see what other agencies are doing with it. But it looks like there's no lift on the side of the county nor on the side of PD. We would just enroll people as they come into the jail and uh, it would be a two thousand dollar deductible in the event that we have to use this healthcare issue that the county is not paying for it out of pocket. So it almost seems like a too good to be true, but low holding, it, it is there. So um, also the um, uh, I, I think I may have mentioned it to the county commission about the homelessness task force. We'll be continuing to meet regarding that. And then hopefully, once we get a good handle on that, we'll be able to turn it over to more um, potentially to the city or to just a, a joint group that will be able to handle that. We're a little leery with law enforcement taking the lead on an issue that's not necessarily a criminal nexus to it. Uh, two last things that the Aggieville Business Association at the last law board meeting uh, talked about um, issues related to and concerns again with road restrictions on moral street. Uh, our law board member, uh, uh, Mr. Eastley is going to be uh, working with us as well as with the ABA to see what, if any, um, compromises that can be made to hold things out. So we will keep you all uh, in the loop as that one as well. And then the final thing is what I mentioned to the law board members uh, earlier this week that I want to say publicly that for two thousand twenty six, the Riley County Police Department will be asking for an entirely flat budget. Any increases, whether it's a request for cola, uh, will be something that we will have to find internally and make sure that it can be sustained in perpetuity. So we're not going to be, uh, if we ask for any increases, it will be because tariffs or anything else has gotten to the point that our current budget cannot handle it. But I anticipate, highly anticipate that the budget we will be coming to, to the county, uh, to the city. Uh, next year into our law board will be entirely flat, the same budget that it is this year. Other than that, I stand ready for any questions that the mission may have.
I would have to say all that homeless task force that we probably need to get our state senate and um, state house members involved. Because probably what changes that we need is going to probably have to take place at the state level. That's what I'm thinking. So having that input and having their input and having to know what's going on is probably going to be useful tool in this process.
Definitely. We'll be able to have statistics, numbers, data and incidents, or incidents, particular incidents for you. Uh, the biggest red flag that we see right now is just any individuals who are coming from outside the county, whether on their own or being bused or transported out here, are taking away the resources that for the people that we only have enough resources for those within our county. And how do we help those counties get those resources or come to some type of agreement where we're not overextending our tax base here, supporting a tax base from other places.
Have you, have you been able to, to determine which counties those are?
Uh, I think some of the counties that you had, had, had in mind before um, were uh, it, it's mainly going to be the smaller places adjacent to Riley County. Um, that we'll be sending them to go to the big city in Manhattan because they have the resources. So we don't have any indication that it's a malice thing or that they're just trying to sweep something under the rug. But uh, all our current indications are that those churches or uh, law enforcement or other places just say they don't have the resources. You might want to go uh, to Riley County.
Muslims basically.
No, not bus.
But, but you know, I, I, we think it was, I, there was um, one report that our police officers from adjacent county were bringing some people over. Now that to me is unacceptable.
Yes, that's a definite no-no. As a matter of fact, we've got an email about uh, one, we were at one place on an entirely different thing. And then a cop car from another Jason county pulls up and says, hey, we're dropping off. And it's like, you didn't even call the shelter. You didn't call us and you didn't call. So that's something that we'll be working on, on our end. And our next meeting, which is uh, uh, at the end of this month, uh, I believe we will be inviting uh, you to that meeting as well. And then there we'll, we'll work on gather, we're gathering that data now. So we'll be able to share it with everyone at that particular meeting.
Yeah, that's. They do that, they're gonna have to charge you.
Oh, yeah, yes. Yeah, I know.
People need places to go, but that's not the way.
Yeah, just give us a heads up. It was again, I, and, and I say it was kind of, kind of um, knew where we were going when I sent that in, that email out. And uh, Commissioner Folkey had said she had an interest, so she wants to be CC'd in it. And within two minutes of me sending the email back, I got an email directly from Michigan Folkey asking.
My question I have on that particular issue, are you aware of any other regions are adding similar? Sir, has that you, did any of your peers also say, hey, we're dealing with this uh, too? Here's what we've done, or here's what we want to do.
Yeah, so I'll say something. It, it, it may sound controversial, but it's the absolute truth. So, uh, so I mean no malice by what I'm going to say is that uh, typically when you have um, certain counties that are working on resources for their particular, for their folks, they're providing services for their folks. Other counties who may not have it or may not have it in the budget, for whatever reason, tend to refer a certain pop, that population over to the, to the Jason county to do it. So Sha- um, I'm sorry, out in Lawrence in particular, they've been, made it no secret. But the thing with Lawrence is Lawrence continues to build and uh, resources in other places tend to collapse. So what we're looking at is how do we, how do we um, help other locations that have the means, looking at Geary County, looking at Junction City? How do we potentially partner with them uh, to see where we can share? Cause we see a lot of folks coming back and forth from JC to here, how can we uh, ensure that we've got that built up? So that will be, once we have that data set, that's when we'll be re-engaging with the hospitals, other mental health providers, uh, Conza, uh, all those these different people to try to figure out how we're going to work this situation. But yes, it is, it is definitely a common occurrence, not here, just in our AOR, but our state and the country as a whole.
And then some of those meetings, and it, it's a big problem for the downtown merchants in areas that were built for the community and enjoy the kids. And I actually know an individual lives in very nice apartments down in this uh, female was not comfortable because of certain people hanging around the area now, very frequently. So it's a huge concern with business managers down there and business owners.
Yeah, and, and there is, uh, there's a saying in NAMI, uh, National Alliance on Mental Illness, that nothing about us, without us, and that's how we're looking at it. We did have a conversation with the Chamber of Commerce uh, in Manhattan a few weeks ago. And that was again, one of the things that as how can the business community help uh, once we come up with certain ideas uh, or thoughts on which directions to go? Uh, and that was one of the biggest things, how do we pull in folks who are uh, on house and, and talk about what their needs are, what would um, incentivize them to, to getting help in, in different things? So once we pull up the data, we will be pulling, reaching out to the downtown Manhattan initiative, the DMI folks. Uh, and then bringing them in and asking what issues are you seeing? And then through the data, through, through the uh, the complaints, if you will, we'll figure out what our potential plan on moving forward will be.
Yeah, and you know, some are like feeable, it's too tried to do a lot, but they're not going to be able to handle huge influx, it's all.
A hundred percent.
Fifteen units or something.
Something like that.
Three different.
They have to go through a lot of counseling and preparation before they can really accept the.
And, and then the issue primarily is again, if someone's not able to, or it was, it's, it's not adhering to the rules or what it is to, to stay in housing or to, to get counsel or to not to be sober, things like that. And if there, there's a, a huge amount of patience, but once you've gotten to the point that you're no longer able to stay at B ABLE or at the shelters, then it becomes another issue entirely. And how do we deal with that?
You know, the jail is working with people that are being released, kind of, you know, the situation.
Yes, and, and actually that's one of the good things for with what we're looking at from the Trinity healthcare option, because the, it's a portable insurance. So when folks are released from the jail, they do have that same insurance and it also covers mental health, not just physical health.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, sir.
I'll try not to break the door in one day. Well, there's another set of doors over there too. Thirty seven dollars. Going back and forth and another story. Every day.
You know, how, you know.
Can't see the guy, he must have left the arm too.
Hey, you don't have anything.
Okay.
The fact that I can't find it.
Good morning, Commissioners Jake Manson, Riley County Councilor here to just do a quick update in my administrative session, kind of what's going on in our office. Uh, somewhat business as usual. I've been working with, of course, Elizabeth and advertising for our existing county councilor position. And we've got a couple uh, applications in and we're excited to kind of go through that process and, and see what, what can come of it. Um, and so we're, we're working on that and just seeing where that takes us. Um, and then I also wanted to talk briefly about, of course, our appellate case or potential Supreme Court case. I went ahead and filed the response to that petition for review uh, yesterday. So we're moving forward with that. Uh, there's another document I probably plan on filing as well that I'll be working on relatively soon. But uh, basically the end of this month for me, I have a lot of large, uh, very important uh, litigation deadlines to tend to. So most of my efforts have been uh, towards that and will be pretty much to the end of the month. Um, and then of course, we have our Keats meeting uh, coming up, uh, in which my office and one, uh, and Shannon will be there to help facilitate easement documents and kind of get everybody up to speed. Kinda get everybody up to speed and answer any questions on that. So those are kinda more the larger projects that. We're facing right now and and everything, everything's going smoothly. Uh, definitely, I'm ready to have. Uh, another attorney in the office, but we're we're marching along. Uh, I I would say pretty well with that consideration, so. Uh, if if the commission has any questions for me directly.
Yeah, on the the Keats meeting, we're going to have uh public easement documents there.
Yep, all sixty, so we're gonna have it organized so where I have, everybody has, everybody's gonna have their own folder, there's gonna be. Um, there's temporary easements and then there's also permanent easements too. Uh, and I'll bring copies so that way, whatever, you know, we end up having them sign, uh they'll get to take a copy home. We'll either either send it via uh email or letter and add the actual signed copy version, but I figured I'd just give them. One that we have while we're there. And so, and just to be uh, just to be clear, if any, you know, Keats residents are listening. Kind of a a preamble before that meeting is that, of course, temporary construction easement, it's temporary, it's only gonna last a year. Uh, to allow the folks to get on and do the work that they need to do to put the sewer main in. Some folks are gonna have permanent easements where. The sewer main line is going to be and that's where it needs to be and they're gonna have to have easements on the property for that. Um, and um, of course, if there's any questions, concerns, discussion points we wanna have before or after. Uh, just feel free to contact my office.
Hopefully, we'll get a good turnout.
I'm hoping so. Anything else? Alrighty.
I, you know what, I was looking at this game and I'm just trying to figure out the last time we played a ranked team. To start the season, had to go all the way back to nineteen seventy-three. I wasn't alive yet, but I will tell you, it was against the University of Florida in Gainesville and as you can probably imagine, we lost. I was there in the Vince Gibson era, so.
You need to go on a trivia show.
Well, yeah, but I'm thinking of all the games, just even the Bill Snyder era, you know, I mean, we played Stanford. UCLA after Rose Bowl, U USC in two thousand and one, California with with Aaron Rodgers. It wasn't the first game of the year. It was second.
Say, he's gotta be on a trivia show, he's a bunch of money.
See, who who else? Uh, Iowa, the one year when it was a hundred and fifteen degrees. They weren't playing, so I had to go all the way back to nineteen seventy-three, but then nineteen seventy. With the Utah State here, both teams were ranked fourteenth, so.
Well, it was, it was a very.
And then I was also thinking the last time we actually played an overseas game. Was at the end of nineteen ninety-one, the Coca-Cola Bowl in Japan against Nebraska. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The spread ended up being fifty-one and a half, so. Funnels are thinking it's gonna be a low-scoring game, I think two. Spread still three, so. I think it's gonna be a knockout, drag them around, punch you in the mouth type of game. Both teams match up well in defense. Our secondary, I worry about, two of our starters may or may not play, I don't know yet. I think our offense is ahead of Iowa State's offense right now. I hope we can throw the football. I think we've got receivers finally to accomplish that. I don't think Dylan Edwards is gonna be a twenty carry type of back this game or any game this season, so. Somebody's gotta step up to be that thunder to his lightning. Um, so I'll be interested to see, but I think overall, we're gonna sweep this game out some way, say, form twenty-eight on six. Twenty-eight, twenty-six. I'm not gonna take the spread, I'm not taking the spread on this one.
I was gonna say twenty-seven, twenty-four, but I'll. Talk about it, make it twenty-one seventeen.
Well, it's a three-point spread, I think.
It's stayed pretty consistent since.
Well. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go crazy, thirty-one, twenty-eight.
Well, my understanding of the far again is uh. It's always been usually the one possession game, so I'm gonna get into twenty-seven, twenty-two. Twenty-seven, twenty, Jets. I I wrote down in twenty-eight, twenty. You said twenty-seven, what day? How long you get month this that?
Um, I'm thinking it's maybe thirty or fifteen, you know. Thirty-one, twenty-one.
Eleven AM. I don't know, I can tell you Ireland time. If you drink enough Guinness, it probably doesn't matter. Is it a six-hour difference? Okay, well, interesting to think about Iowa State, you got a good quarterback in Rocco Beck. At least comparable in terms of Big Twelve, but he lost both of his receivers and his starting tight end last year. So they're starting over in the passing game, so. Thankfully, with our secondary being down, that helps a little bit. I also worry about the special teams, we're starting over, brand new kicker.
Yeah, we don't have the kicker.
I can tell you the transfer guy last one, I mean, we got a transfer kicker after locals sort of.
Yeah.
The one that's starting. Yeah, in practice, very nice thing, I didn't see him on the in practice, you know, lights out, he doesn't even start kicking.
Okay.
But it's kind of lax that he's spoken since.
Explains why he's there.
Fifty-five, not wrong.
That's good, you know, I wish I didn't know that yesterday.
But I'm thinking this is the first time. K-State's played a ranked team while being ranked too, gotta find the information on that. For both teams, for K-State to start up ranked, oh yeah, I don't, I couldn't find any info on that. Kind of bothers me though is is playing Saturday night. Coming right back and they played Saturday again. Man, I said, that's a tough turn.
I mean, just forget we're.
Right.
That's not much on the place, you talking.
The six-hour difference?
Yeah, they say they're not repubbed, just like going down, just like.
And you've gotta, I mean, somewhere in there, you've gotta take a day off. I I guess it depends on what time you leave on Sunday.
Probably surely get Monday off.
Yeah. Really throws you off.
It's amazing.
Not even at the college level, I mean, it's, it's a routine.
Division one.
Yeah. Home from work yesterday and they.
Would make sense.
They must be start programming video awards and stuff, was there one? Getting things ready for next week. I hope they get the temple opened up over there. I don't know why you waited until like the first part of July to do that. I mean, I I know that there's gotta be a reason, rationale, but.
Yeah.
I mean, looks like there's still one spot there they still need to do, so I don't know if they're gonna wait till. After next weekend or what what the process is there, that's been a mess. Particularly after they said they were done messing with.
Yeah, I feel good about like.
Yeah, when they got, you know, Denison opened up there and it's not all the way open either. We still got the one Southland still closed off. Looks like they're getting landscaping, as they ought to be just about done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so K-State's um basketball, I picked up those. Yeah, I'm picking up some European like professionals.
Yeah.
Makes you kinda wonder. Seven foot one. Seven-two. Jason Bennett was the one I was thinking of. Like he was just seven foot.
He was the big guy.
Point back in six. Ed Neely? Oh, he was seven, that was. That was under Huggins and he didn't, he was here for a year, didn't even fly, really. That's about all he could do. No, that name. Do you remember Georgia Lake as? He wasn't real bad, sure.
Yeah.
But uh. And he was on, 'cause I had a cheap T-shirt on. Had a ZADU team that played, Bruce there playing in. Gets off, gets rebound, stands there like this, like the softball, the guys are running. Then after, yeah, he worked. Just for Kay's and my friend dude.
I think Barry, they they have uh.
Well, I can't blame you for that, I did the same. Yeah, so goes like down there and see progress on the windows. I was down there about two weeks ago, I was like, whoa, they're really getting after it. Walking around. And he just laughed. The way to see him in my office, 'cause when I walk in there, you you look through the window, you can't see anything during the day or. Of course, there were only a few games on TV back then, a few, but then so I'm in person. My favorite film.
Just that person. And he was amazing, he he was always a ball player, but. Yeah, or you're gonna make him quit his ass, Peter, eh?
Oh, I knew that was a sub player, so I didn't even know. I can't imagine all the dance parties they had down in the basin. There's a regional, that was the regional branch there for the entire region. Um, and they did all the stuff all the way up until like. About fifty-one and then they rethought some things.
This says he listed two sixty as sophomore, I'm trying to look up. Is he not?
Saw the forecast next week, right? Got a little bit of windows. I know.
It was nice and it's only so humid in the.
Yeah, I'm at that time of the year, I'm fighting with the windshield. I'm like, just, I'm not turning the heat on, trying to get rid of the condensation, so. Look at the legs, dude, it's like all leg.
You gotta forget about Nick. Nice. That was. Okay, Steve. I'm not gonna be here, but. Many people. But.
It's one of those. In the. Go pin on the damn, come pick it up. Get luck with that.
Yeah, they go. Yeah.
Whoops. Whoops. Haven't done that before. Sheriff, your shirt is got to do this.
Oh, but mine started looking to the left.
Yeah, you. Really?
I should give this chair to you.
I'm leaning more towards the middle.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't, I don't know if it's just the floor or something.
But this is.
Paul's game day isn't gonna be there.
They are?
They're not.
Oh.
No.
I thought we were waiting day this. It makes no sense.
That's what I thought.
It's the biggest game of the day by far.
Well, there's not an S C C team there. That's why.
Right, right. Hmm. You should get a little watch video for your.
No, it's not ESPN. It's on ESPN. Yes.
Are you able to? Yeah, sorry. When I was walking over there, just about, about the time I got over. And then. Call for. What? You call for please ask for?
Yeah.
Get your.
That's.
About it.
Okay. So. Do one ten.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and move it. The county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Sheriff Hokey and Commissioner Thor, Jacob Hanson County Counselor and Barry Wilkerson County Attorney recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney client consultation exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act regarding confidential legal advice on contract negotiation and the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at eleven ten A M.
I would second that.
We moved and seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously stated in the attorney client consultation exception against open media. All in favor?
Aye. Commissioners, the meeting is live.
Okay, I'll move it to the board of county commissioners to matter executive session.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to the board of county commissioners to matter executive session. All in favor?
Aye. Also moved it to record reflect action. Shall we take in consistent with the consensus reached in executive session?
I would second.
It moved and seconded if the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
And moved and seconded if the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
I would second.
That's it.
We've been reporting numbers in the.
All right, I don't, I don't have anything else.
Okay, I'd make a motion to adjourn the August twenty second meeting of the Board of Riley County Commissioners.
Actually, it's twenty first.
Oh, this is the twenty third, twenty first, I'm sorry, twenty first.
Been moving seconded adjourned the uh August twenty first meeting, the Riley County Commission.